Good afternoon. I am calling to order the Orleans Parish School Board Committee of the Whole Meeting for June 6th, 2023. The time is now 1:03 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Parker?
Present.
Mr. Zerbegon? Mr. Ashley?
Present.
Dr. Batiste?
Present.
Ms. Bowdoin?
Present.
Ms. Eames?
Present.
Mr. Marshall?
Present.
Also present, Dr. Avis Williams Superintendent Ashley Halpern, Board Counsel. You have a quora.
Thank you so much. Before we move on in our agenda, I just want to take, ask everyone to join us in a brief moment of silence. We have had a number of students, a number of NOLA Public Schools students lost in the last, since our last meeting. And I just want to take a moment to honor their memory and just hope that we can avoid such tragedy in the future. Thank you. One other brief announcement. I am, I've been made aware that OPSB Live is currently down, but the board meeting will be live on YouTube and Instagram, and we will record the meeting and place it on our streaming services as soon as the meeting is complete. And with that, I'm going to yield to Dr. Batiste to take us through the initial part of the meeting.
At this time, I'd ask for everyone to please stand and to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Interpretation, interpretation services are available during today's meeting, and we'd like our interpreters to please come forward and introduce themselves.
Thank you. Good eve, good afternoon, Board members. Good afternoon, Dr. Williams, Superintendent. Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Viet Quyn Pham. I will provide interpretation services in Vietnamese. Xin chào toàn thầy quý vị, tôi tên là Viet Quyn. Tôi là thông diệt viên. Tôi sẽ thông diệt cho quý vị trong buổi họp này. Nếu quý vị cần, xin cho tôi biết. Xin chân thành cảm ơn.
Good afternoon. My name is Marcelina Pinero. I will be providing interpretation services in Spanish. Buena tarde todo mundo. Yo voy a estar dando servicios de interpretación en español. Si necesita ayuda, levanta la mano y yo voy a asistir.
Thank you so much. At this time, we're going to ask our Board Counsel to please take us through the rules for public comment.
Anyone wishing to speak with regard to items on the agenda should fill out a public comment card and submit it to the Board Secretary. Cards will be received up to one half hour after the meeting begins. Each person shall be permitted to speak up to two minutes, as established by the Chair. I will recognize the speaker and give the speaker permission to proceed. The speaker shall state their name and address for the board records. Those who have a group concern are encouraged to select a spokesperson from the group to address the concern. Speakers are expected to be as concise as possible and to present their questions and comments in an objective manner, in accordance with good taste and decorum, and without reference to or insinuations against the board, its members, or school system employees. Disruptions or disorderly conduct at the committee meeting will constitute grounds for the presiding officer to ask security personnel to remove the offender. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will yield to our President to take us through items 1.4.
Thank you so much, Dr. Batiste. We're now, we're now at the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda?
No.
Hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as provided?
Some move.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Ashley and seconded by Ms. Bowdoin. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is adopted. Now, moving on to item 2.1, I will once again yield to our Board Counsel.
It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board adopt the minutes of the May 16th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting. We have a motion to adopt the minutes as presented.
Some move.
And, Dr. Batiste, are you waiving the reading of the minutes?
Yes.
All right. It's been moved by Dr. Batiste, seconded by Mr. Marshall. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes have been adopted.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Counsel. I will now yield to Ms. Eames to facilitate the accountability and charter section of our meeting.
Thank you, President Parker. We'll hear from Dr. Kelly Jordan, and she'll walk us through the school, this month's schools update. Dr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mrs. Eames. Good afternoon, President Parker, members of the Board, Board Counsel, and Dr. Williams. Excited to bring you the June Schools Update. With no technology issues. All right. I practiced, I promised. All right. So, school highlights for this month. The theme is for sure graduations and STEM. Over on the top left, we have a presentation that was given at the inaugural STEM Summit. We have a number of schools that had promotion and graduation ceremonies, and I want to draw your attention to a really cool story in the middle at the top, where there's a mom and her son on the same steps at Akili Academy when he was a kindergarten student and after his eighth grade promotion. So, really exciting there. On the top right, we have six mentor teachers who went through training this year. We have first-line schools, so excited that they'll be able to support other teachers in their, in the classroom. And then on the bottom right, we have Ash and Wheatley who participated in STEM Fest. So, the STEM Summit was for educators K through 12, and then STEM Fest came to schools, and Ash and Wheatley allowed students to participate there. So, again, graduation and STEM this month. My last update this month is just to highlight a reception that was recently hosted by Children's Hospital. So, Children's Hospital hosted school leaders, board chairs at their campus recently to share a little bit of information about both their Thrive Kids model, but to also listen, to also really understand from schools, what are some of the challenges that they're facing in implementing partnerships? What are some of the challenges in getting resources to students who need mental health supports, and how can they be a better partner here in the city? And so, we're really excited. There's a press conference tomorrow, and Dr. Williams will be sharing more updates this Thursday in her remarks around a great partnership with Children's Hospital. But wanted to really thank them for hosting school leaders, board chairs, members of the NOLA Public Schools staff, and board members to really bring voices to the table so that we can collectively problem-solve around some of our biggest challenges. And so, at this time, I'll pass it back to Ms. Eames to introduce our June, I was about to say May, but June, Schools at Work presentation. Ms. Eames?
Thank you, Dr. Jordan. It's with great pleasure that we welcome Abril Horn, Academic Support Coordinator from Sophie B. Wright School, and some of those wonderful students, many who are sporting honor roll shirts today. So, Dr., Mrs. Horn?
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. I would just want to thank you all again for allowing us to highlight our wonderful school under the direction of Dr. Clark. Initially, when she said, "Ms. Horn, I need you to go run and do a presentation," I said, "Okay, why not grab my students, my babies, to come present, because I want you all to hear from them?" So, I'm gonna go ahead and pass the mic to Ms. Taylor.
Good afternoon. My name is Taylor Levens. I'm a rising senior at Sophie B. Wright and have been taking honors classes since my sophomore year. I participate in drama club, on the debate team, doing enrollment classes through the University of New Orleans, and I am a member of the cheer team. Today, I'll be talking to you about POSI. The POSI organization provides full tuition leadership scholarships for colleges such as Villanova, Notre Dame, Case Western, and others. We've previously had three scholars from Sophie B. Wright receive the POSI scholarship. These students include Roger Sveterson, Matthew Drew, and Derek Smith. As you can tell, all of the previous scholars have been male. This year, I've been nominated for POSI, and if I'm selected for the scholarship, I would be the first female student from Sophie B. Wright to receive it.
Next, we'll have Tanaya and Nicholas.
Good evening. I'm Tanaya Lee, a rising sophomore at Sophie B. Wright. I'm a member of the Cheer Team, Debate Team, and College Track. And I was able to maintain a 4.0 GPA throughout the whole school year. And today, I'm going to be talking about our freshman academy. The freshman academy helped me transition my mind from middle school to high school by helping me become more self-reliant and how to become more successful throughout my high school time, letting me know that nobody is going to be on my back about a due day for assignment like they did in middle school. The teachers made me feel comfortable, making me feel more than welcome to ask questions when I am unfamiliar with the activities. Some of the activities we did was hallway parties, educational field trips, and rewards for getting great scores on tests.
Good afternoon. My name is Nicholas Williams. I'm a rising senior and three-year honors student at Sophie B. Wright. I have participated in our Rising Stars Drama Club. I'm a, I'm a, a, a member of our National Honor Society. I'm a part of school newspaper. I do debate as well, and I'm also a proud member of College Track New Orleans. And also, I have recently been accepted into the Leadership Enterprise for Diverse America, which is hosted at the Princeton University, being the first Sophie B. Wright scholar to do so.
Wow.
And today, I'll be talking about one of our newer school initiatives that will take place next year. It's called the Social slash Emotional Initiative. Sophie B. Wright has partnered with the National Cares Mentoring Movement for the 2023-2024 school year. The program will provide students with trained professional social workers, psychologists, and counselors. It is no secret that, it is no secret that high school can be very stressful, and having on-hand wellness professionals will allow students to find a hea, a healthy outlet to clear them up and relieve all types of stress. As young, educated students of color, our mental hea, our mental well-being is often disregarded. Students can use the lessons taught to them by these talented counselors to maturely handle your typical high school mess, as well as situations beyond high school, beyond college, beyond professionalism, and beyond. The staff at Sophie B. Wright, the staff and the faculty at Sophie B. Wright care deeply about all members of their community, as well as their mental well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Up next, we have Cameron and Jordan. Joseph?
My apologies, Joseph Antoine.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Cameron Lewis, a rising junior, a part of the Warriors' Track and Field Team, Debate Team, and National Honor Society at Sophie B. Wright High School. I am a two-year honors student and managed to maintain a 4.0 grade point average throughout both school years. Today, I am here to inform you on the academic competitions my school has to offer. Sophie B. Wright offers, offers academic competitions that the students, that the, that helps the students learn teamwork, problem solve, and build sense of culture and community. These competitions are beneficial to us because we become competitive and get to apply our academic skills in real-time competitions, learning how to work under pressure, which improves our testing skills. I myself competed in the Great Debate and won. Not only did I gain over $100, I got a chance to improve my confidence in articulation. Competing in the vocabathon and mathathon also helped improve my skills and many others in the classroom. Overall, the monthly competitions help boost participation and positivity in school community.
Good afternoon. I'm Joseph Antoine. I'm a rising sophomore at Sophie B. Wright. I am a member of our Warrior Track and Football Team and also our Aspen Challenge Team. During my ninth-grade year, I won homecoming, Mr. Freshman, and I have maintained a 3.8 GPA. Like Cam stated, we offer competitions such as the Great Debate, vocabathon, mathathon, and scienceathon. We also offer the poetry contest where we had our state representative, Amy Freeman, come to judge. We also have the Leapathon and Black History competition. These competitions help build team-working skills, public speaking, critical thinking, and researching. Thank you.
And let me just say, when it comes to the competition and when Dr. Clark says you could win money, they on it. They on it. All right, next, we have Ms. Tajay Sutherland.
Hi. My name is Tajay. Although on May 15, I graduated and became alumni, I'm still part of Sophie V. During all four years, I remained in honors courses, holding a 3.9 GPA. I was the 2022-2023 Homecoming Queen. I am a dual enrollment scholar, student council president, National Honor Society member, and cheer captain. Although I have learned many things and participated in a million events, this was my favorite. This year, Sophie B. Wright held its first cotillion. During this event, 34 of our senior girls were introduced to society. Our school ho, hosted six events leading up to the cotillion. We had an etiquette course hosted by the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, a tea party held by our sponsors, panting events directed by our personal artists, school gatherings, dance workshops, and a makeup lesson from a local makeup artist. The event benefited me in more ways than one. For example, I learned proper table courtesy and etiquette while further developing my social skills. In the fall, I will be attending Southern University A&amp;M at Baton Rouge, where I plan to earn my sociology degree, my master's degree in sociology. Thanks to the cotillion, I am more confident in my public speaking skills. The best part of the cotillion was the fact that our SBW family sponsored it. Each staff member voluntarily donated at least $100 so that our event can be little to no cost to us. This event was my favorite because our school had allowed us to have the opportunity many girls dream of but can't afford to participate in due to personal reasons. So, I love that our school is able to coordinate this for us.
And last, I just want to quickly talk about the staff involvement. So, I've been a part of the Sophie B. Wright family going on 15 years now, which is a blessing. But our staff members get involved, as you heard from many of our students. You know, we put on a cotillion. We do a lot for these kids. So, for myself, I'm over homecoming, prom, cheer, the best cheer squad in the city. Okay. And a number of things. I heard one of the board members mention the Mardi Gras Food Festival, so that's our biggest fundraiser. And we make sure that the staff members get involved because we know at the end of the day, it's for our students, it's for our kids. If you look at the slide, we did have our, you know, beginning of the year talent show karaoke, karaoke contest, and we had some of our staff members that were TLC, Rum DMC, things like that. Dr. Clark did sing. It was nice. Good job, Doc, Dr. Clark. But we just try to do things, you know, within the school to build a rapport with one another, as well as our students. And that is it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Horn.
Thank you.
I thank you, young men and young ladies, for that great presentation today. For sure, you all are articulating, and you have a lot of confidence to stand before us and speak. So, we thank you for that. And we'd like to thank Dr. Clark for the job that you all are doing for our students. As Dr. Williams say, our scholars in NOLA Public Schools. in NOLA Public Schools. Colleagues, any questions? Ms. Baldwin?
Not a question, just a thank you. I'm proud to have Sophie B. Wright in my district and love to follow all the work and the exciting things that y'all are doing over there. So thanks for bringing your wonderful students, Ms. Horn, today. And thank you also to Dr. Clark. I feel like Sophie B. Wright has so much personality, and a lot of it comes from the staff involvement and from really your, as a school, the goal of really allowing each student to express themselves and show their own personality. And it really shows. And I loved at the graduation this year how you had graduates come back and speak to the students.
And I taught every last one of them.
Oh, right. And, you know, I sat right in front of them, and though they were from different classes, you know, they were, they were all pals, all chatting respectfully during this event. But it was, it was really great to see them. Great to see them come back and, and share their experiences. So I just think Sophie B. Wright is such a special place, and I'm really glad to see all of y'all today, and congratulations on all of your accomplishments.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Anyone else? Of course, President Parker.
Of course. Yeah, I just, I just want to thank you all, students, for coming. It's not easy to spend your summer in this building, talking to a bunch of random adults. So thank you for, for your leadership at your school and for coming and, and sharing with us everything that you're doing. I think, Nicholas, are you, you're a rising senior? Is that right? Well, I look forward to seeing you in that top 10 next year, I'm assuming, and shaking your hand at graduation.
I am. I'm number four.
All right. And we've heard, we've heard some wonderful things about your debate team. And several months ago, we heard from the Dolores Taylor Arthur School about their debate team. And let me just say, I would love to see those two schools face off in a debate, and I would happily buy a ticket to that event. But, but seriously, thank you all so much for coming to speak. It's a beautiful school, beautiful community. And thank you to you, Ms. Horn, and everyone else on, on your team for, for building the culture that exists at Sophie B.
Ms. Eames.
Dr. Williams.
So I just want to say congratulations to all of you for the year that you've had and for the future that's ahead of you. Our future POSI Scholar winner, I know you're gonna get it, but, but you guys are very impressive. And, you know, you're just living proof that there is so much promise in our young people. And, you know, nothing burns me up more than when people try to villainize and blame you for any of the challenges that we have in our community. You guys are amazing. And just want you to know that we see you, we hear you, and we love you, and we're here to support you, and just thankful that you're here tonight to share the wonderful things that you're doing and looking forward to seeing more. And thank you, Ms. Horn.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That's everyone. Thank you. Now you can go and enjoy the rest of your summer vacation.
They said, yeah, they didn't want to see the school building for two months, but only for you all today. So thank you again.
We appreciate that.
And this concludes our June Schools at Work presentation.
Okay, next, we have Mr. Simmons, who's gonna give us the update on accountability. Mr. Simmons?
Thank you, Ms. Eames, and good afternoon to the rest of the board members and Dr. Williams here for this month's accountability updates. Usually, notices of noncompliance is my least favorite part of the accountability updates, but I'm super excited. Last month, I had the opportunity to attend the commencement ceremony of Einstein Charter High School at Saratoga Reed, and I'm excited to share that their Level 2 Notice of Noncompliance will officially be closed this month. So that's the most exciting news that we have regarding notices of noncompliance. Policy HH, not, not going to linger here. The policy is still under review and revisions. I know some people were probably anticipating it for a second read, but it will be held over to at least next month. Do want to provide an update regarding our five-year portfolio planning work as well. And right now, we've just surpassed the midpoint of between Phase 1 and, between Phase 1 and Phase 2. And we're just taking a look back, just taking a 90-day project step back to just kind of provide a, just a high-level overview specifically around some of our accomplishments. Also, bringing the focus to our desired outcome. So Phase 1, the completion of Phase 1 was marked during the last update at the board meeting. Of course, we plan to continue board engagement throughout the remainder of the phases and continue to make connections to all our other strategies that are moving along as well. Draft goals, outcomes, and metrics have been created and reviewed for three of our four areas of inquiry. That includes quality, quantity, and choice, with the intention of creating strong draft versions for all, all areas, that additional fourth area, for feedback throughout Phase 2. Data gathering is progressing in key areas. We're currently in the process of amending our agreement with our consultants to allow for additional data sharing, and strengthening that data agreement will provide the foundation for easy updates and give us a post check regarding the capacity of the work moving forward. Our internal steering committee has been instrumental in the work, but we do need to develop some systems and articulate some clear roles and responsibilities for the longevity of the plan. And the working group has been invaluable, but we want to continue to evolve external stakeholders as advocates among their peer networks. So we appreciate that diverse team that we have. As far as momentum and opportunities, as we move through Phase 2, we're just riding a wave of this momentum, aligning three of those four areas, making those connections, and also our initial engagement. And we're gonna use that to leverage several opportunities that we have, which is focused on the development of the variety area of inquiry. This is the one where we've engaged in a lot of conversation. It's the most novel, and so there's a lot of work to be done with that piece. We've, you know, we spent, we spent a lot of time, and people are familiar with quantity, quality, and choice, and the variety is a piece that we really need to work on teasing out. We want to solidify our approach to target setting, reaffirm the role of the, of the working group, and collect feedback for diverse stakeholder engagement. Looking ahead to the next 90 days, they are highlighted here as a high-level overview of Phase 2. I just, the main note that I really wanted to poke, focus out was the previously mentioned data amendment to our agreement also includes an extension of Phase 2. We saw some challenges forthcoming with engaging, especially with, with school leaders during this summer break, summer months, and so we wanted to extend that to the end of August, just to make sure we haven't, we're having quality engagement and we receive some quality deliverables as well. Our next steps are listed here by the area of inquiry, and so they're also disaggregated by the three, three very specific stakeholder groups, the NOLA PS team, the, our consultants, and also the, the working group. And like previously mentioned, the majority of our efforts will be heavily weighted towards the variety area of inquiry, and we'll move and trying to develop that piece as well. And some of our key questions for that variety area of inquiry are listed here, and this is how we, we developed these as a working group as we approached the area of fleshing, area of inquiry, this area of inquiry and fleshing that piece out. Are there any questions for this, from this section?
I have a question. It's okay. I just, give me, give me a sense on, I see the, the 90-day step back. Where are we in, I see the 90-day look forward. When is the culmination of this experience supposed to be done?
Okay, so we're, we're in Phase 2 right now. There are four phases. And so next spring, that's when we plan to have our initial portfolio report, and also have everything in place to produce this report annually, and we'll have our plan ready as well and operational.
Gotcha. So we should wait, so for audience and all things considered, for the five-year portfolio plan to be complete, we're really looking for next spring is the, is the time? I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Simmons, thank you very much, Ms. Eames. Just a quick question, Mr. Simmons. Looking at the slide that has the, the look ahead to the next 90 days, in June, under metrics and targets, it says, "Determined geographic lens." Can you just provide a little more context on what you mean by that?
Yes. Unfortunately, I can, because we had, we had our internal steering meeting, steering committee meeting today, and we wrestled with that geographic lens. And so that is really looking at, make, not just ensuring that we have high-quality schools, that we have high-quality schools that are accessible in every area, every region. And we're trying to flesh out what those regions could look like, and so we're looking at a couple of different options, and probably will initiate a third option as well that makes sense for, for our needs as NOLA PS, OPSB, and our communities. And so we, we took it a step forward, not just looking at the portfolio planning piece in those four areas through an equity lens, but also realizing that geography plays a part in that equity as well when we talk about access.
And you may have answered this already, but who comprises the working group?
Oh, let's see. We have, we have a lot of people. Let's see. We have, we have Drenda, Kelly, we have myself.
So is it internal?
It's, we have an, we have a working group that is, includes internal and external stakeholders.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
No more questions. Last, did want to bring just an update specifically around the engagement that we have, that, and the work that our team is leading regarding CSAF and school quality profiles. So we, after recently just sharing current revisions of the CSAF and the development of school quality profiles, I just want to show a high-level overview of our recent engagement regarding both of those initiatives. And this slide just kind of shows the cadence of the way we've been engaging with various stakeholders, and particularly with our, with our school leaders. It's just a cyclical approach, approach. We start with the engagement, we get the feedback, we analyze that, and of course, analyze that feedback collaboratively. We consider the feedback, make revisions as necessary, and then just sort of a wash, rinse, repeat to go through again. And every time we circle back, we always say, hey, this is what we heard, here's what, here's what's changed, here's what stayed the same, and we'll also share any, any new insertions as well. April included circling back with school leaders, lifting up what we heard, and sharing our responses, and highlighting any new considerations. The month also included engagement with both internal and external stakeholders regarding the school quality profiles. And so here, you just see bullet points of just the various touchpoints with who and when. And you may see some topics as well. For the month of, May was jump started with another circling back with school leaders. We had made some revisions. It also included some focus engagement around finance, renewal and extensions, and English learners. This is where we started to pull out and focus, kind of hone in instead of taking, instead of looking at the CSAF and those pieces, other pieces as a whole, kind of chunking everything so we could tease out each of those specific areas and components of the CSAF. We also convened and shared an overview of changes to the CSAF and school quality profiles with charter board chairs. Additionally, I had the opportunity to engage with David Greenberg of the National Association of Charter School Authorizers, or NACA, to get some feedback regarding our work around school quality profiles and the accountability framework, just kind of get a poll so that makes sure we align with national standards. They've recently updated their national standards, and I shared our revision with him, a version of the CSAF about a month ago, and the school quality profiles. And I was able to share him some of the updates that we made. And so he shared some insightful feedback and thoughts as well. And so just to help get, you know, get an external view, I know our district is very unique, but there are a lot of, there are a lot of schools, systems, and authorizers looking at their accountability framework. But we are very unique because there's not a lot of people in, in, in my network, when we talk about NACA and the A-Game convenings, that are engaged in such work that we're doing with the school quality profiles. So we have a lot of, a lot of folks looking, looking at us and see how we land with that piece.
So let me get a clear understanding. So we've been involved in this for one year this spring, and so now you say it's gonna take us another year next spring to complete our project. Is that what I'm?
No, no, ma'am. The CSAF, we're on track for CSAF for August. I was referring, in the previous section, I was referring to our five-year portfolio plan for next spring.
So we're being year two of the five-year portfolio plan?
This is currently year zero.
Okay.
And so we'll be kicking that, kicking that off during the next year.
Okay. And so we can expect that by next spring?
Yes, ma'am.
We will have things in place that we're gonna see a difference in what we're seeing presently?
Well, we'll have a, we'll have a long-term plan and also have an annual portfolio, a process to create an annual portfolio.
Well, we, we're bleeding. We need an emergency plan. And I don't know if we can, we can count this as zero if you want. I'm counting it as one. And, you know, our kids are hurting. I think we have about 35 schools that's a DNF, and until we do something, our children are hurting right now. Our community is in pain. We should all be in pain with what we're witnessing.
And for June and throughout the rest of the summer, I have just listed here some of the upcoming key engagements that will include updating our consultants on our work just to continue to make sure everything is aligned with, between the CSAF, school quality profiles, where we're headed with those pieces, and our five-year portfolio plan. Also, continued focus engagement with school leaders in the area of oversight and finance will be coming up as well. And as exciting as this process has been, the greatest joy is being on schedule to share a final version of our updated accountability framework within the next month or so. So we are on track with our August, August target date. And that concludes my update. Are there any questions?
Any questions, board members? Comments? Seeing, hearing, none? Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
Thank you, Ms. Eames.
Now we'll move to Ms. Baldwin for the Property Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Eames. Welcome to the June Property Committee. We will start today with our Capitals and Facilities Update, and this month, we have Tracy Mercadell. Mr. Mercadell, take it away. Thanks.
Good afternoon, board members and Dr. Williams. I will be presenting the June Capital Projects Update for planned, unplanned, and emergency projects. We currently have, we currently have three projects in designer selection process, 23, 22 projects in various phases of design, nine projects in procurement, and 12 projects under construction. Six of the projects that we have funding for have been completed. The next several slides will represent the various phases the projects are currently in. Sure if there's any questions?
I have a question around Ellie Robway.
Okay.
I don't know why it's in my mind that the school is vacant now.
No. So they will be moving to the Dent Facility. So that facility is, there's still work going on from Hurricane Ida. So they will be moving in December to January.
Of next year?
December of this year, January, yes.
Okay.
Mid, mid-school year.
Okay. Okay, so they will be using the school in the fall?
Yes.
All right, just to clarify, Ms. Mercadell, the school that's currently in the Robway facility is moving to the Dent Facility on Esplanade in December of this year. They're not, they won't be there at the beginning of the school year?
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We have one action item today. It's action item 4.2. It's a request to approve auction and sale of 4422 General Meyer Avenue, New Orleans, Louisiana 70131, and ratification of the March 9, 2023 property auction. It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board ratify the initial auction held March 9, 2023 relative to the property located at 4422 General Meyer Avenue, New Orleans. Authorize any future auctions of the property that may be necessary in accordance with applicable applicable law. Authorize the sale of the property to the highest bidder and authorize the board president or in the president's absence, the vice president to execute any and all documents required to effectuate the sale. May have a motion to move item 4.1 to the full board.
Come on.
Second.
Second, is there any public comment? No, any board comment? Okay, um, we have a motion second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that moves, oh, sorry, Mr. Marshall?
You, you closed property. I'd like to know about the excess property, the vacant properties, et cetera. I know we've completed the process that we've gone through to talk to the community. Where's the schedule at in terms of beginning to look at requesting RFPs or something for, for properties? Where are we?
Ms. DeCure has talked about this at our last board meeting. Um, I, I believe the next step is to work on the development of those CEAs and the sort of model RFQ and CEA. So that's the next step. We have, we've, we as a board have approved the sort of, the framework. Um, the next step is to get the legalities together, um, so that they can move on to actually, you know, engaging this framework, um, on our, on our surplus properties.
So we're actually working on that now?
They are, yes.
Is there any kind of time objective?
I don't know, I, I'll, I'll defer to Dr. Williams. I'm not aware of there's.
Estimate as to when it should be completed?
Yeah, so there's not a timeframe for completion. It's kind of a rolling process, just depending on the number of, of folks who are interested in what we decide to do as we move forward. And as Ms. Bowden said, the CEAs and that sort of thing does require that we engage with our legal team. So, um, we can give another update at the, the July meeting. Um, I would, uh, say that by the August meeting, it'll be more comprehensive because it's going to take some time to, um, vet the interest and to make some decisions. But if you've got some specific questions about a specific property, um, definitely let me know and I can get with the team and give you some more concrete answers.
Well, I mean, are we looking at properties, uh, to, to, specific properties to put out? Or are we still looking at a process for making those decisions? I mean, I, I really don't understand where we are. We went through a whole process. It's a matter of saying this building is available, asking for, for proposals or what? Wouldn't, I mean, I don't understand.
Well, so that was part of the process initially was, um, declaring which buildings were already surplus. So that's already been done. And so from there, it is a matter of seeking public input and public interest in terms of, um, what someone may want to do with or in a building and, you know, for us to take a look at it and see if it aligns with our district priorities in terms of supporting the community in a positive way. And that would absolutely require the engagement with our legal team in terms of, um, CEAs, um, lease agreements or whatever the case may be, just depending on the specifics of what, um, a stakeholder might want to do with the building. So I, I don't have any additional updates on that right now, but if you've, again, if you've got a specific question about a specific building, then, uh, we can definitely see what type of interest we've had. But otherwise, we can give a more comprehensive update as we get more activity on it because the process really essentially just started after we wrapped up those surplus facilities meetings, um, what, about a month and a half, two months ago?
And, and the, that process was really to nail down what the decision-making would be once a building was identified. So how are we going to make the decisions, you know, relative to, um, saving it for swing space, um, you know, putting it up for lease, putting it up for auction, et cetera? So that's really what we were working, what that process was working through. But as far as like what the priority sort of list is of which buildings will go through that process, you know, first or in the initial round, I don't know the answer to that and we can ask and, and get, get an answer.
Well, that's exactly what I'm, that's exactly what I'm asking. We've gone through a process, a very lengthy process to get to the point whereby we can't put a building out, because we've had people ask us year after year after year about can they put in a proposal for this building, can we? And it was always a legal question of whether or not we could legally do something. So we went through a whole lengthy process to get to where we are. And it seems to me it's just a matter now of saying, this building is available, community, uh, give us some proposals and for us to vet and look at which proposal we want, talk to the community on which proposal we want. I don't see why we have to go through another process to, to do what we've already done. Why aren't we putting buildings out saying, these buildings are available, give us a proposal?
Well, it will be an individual, it will, they'll be done on a case by case. We're not going to do all the buildings at once.
So which two are we going to do first?
That's a good question. We don't have the answer to that, but we will, we will ask it.
I am asking it.
Well, I don't have the answer. So we'll ask it of the staff and we'll get back. Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Any other questions or comments before we close property? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ashley for Budget Committee.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bowden. Uh, we are now at 5.1. We're going to have a budget update by Mr. Gay. Mr. Gay, are you ready to provide us with a financial update? Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Williams. Uh, I was advised not to use the clicker, so. I will avoid that. For this month, uh, we have our financial statements, uh, budget timeline update and a few departmental updates. Uh, overall, for the month of April, our budget actual income statement had revenues of 2.59 million and they were under budget of 1.7. The year-to-date revenue is very positive against a budget by $9.8 million. Uh, we've had strong investment earnings opportunities as well as some increases in, in local state funding and, and indirect costs. So, uh, at this point, we are, are looking very positive for close to the year end. We've not yet included 9.9 million in revenues. Those will come in in June, those happen at the end of the year with relationship to transfers. And we've not yet received, uh, hairs at this point, so we're, we haven't included those in budget estimates so far. So, uh, the expenses for April were 2.4 million and they were under budget by 667,000 and the net change for the period was a positive 179,000. When we look at the balance sheet, uh, for the period ending April 30th, uh, we had cash of 155 million and total assets of 163 million. We'll see that start to sharply decline in the next, uh, 20 days. We have, uh, we did the May MFP payment. We're about to do a 30-plus million dollar deferred revenue payment to schools. That trues up the negative deferred payment with the positive deferred payment, uh, as well as the June MFP and as well as the revenue anticipation note payback. So, uh, the balance sheet is, is going to take a hit this month, um, but we do have some bills to pay. Overall on emergencies, 40.3 million in fund balance system-wide, 16, and that non-spendable in form relates to the deferred revenue payment. The 2-1 counts were received, so we did do, uh, the first reconciliation for the month of May. In that, we had a small handful of schools that noted some discrepancies in their data and so we've asked schools to really scrub it. We've asked the state for some clarification on a few items, so we're working on those with the schools. I think it was three to five schools overall and we're working on that. And we are getting ready to focus in and send a quick survey out to schools related to CTE data. There was a marked increase in the number of enrollments and credits that we had in CTE compared to last year. We want to verify that because we had an entire CMO network of schools that were told an incorrect course code and that resulted in incorrect amount of funding provided to us. So we're reconciling that. I think the fiscal impact is about 75 or 80,000 dollars for that network, so we want to ensure that that's accurate before we do another round of payments based on our differentiated student counts. For the budget timeline, uh, the majority of the work this week is on, on Thursday. We have the budget hearing, um, at 5 o'clock. You can see here, this would be for the general fund and the special revenue fund. And then we move on to our capital budgets for, uh, July and August. Uh, and we do want to ensure, there, there's a close gap between the May and the June meetings, uh, but we always want to make sure that we have the opportunity for increased input and transparency, uh, in our budgeting process. So always looking for input from the board and from our stakeholders throughout the city in this process. So, uh, we've gotten to this point in budgeting. Next year, you know, we hope to expand the timeline somewhat, probably more on the front end to gather some more input, uh, and look forward to those conversations as we move into this planning for the post-Esar world that we're all going to be living in soon. And then just quickly for departmental updates, uh, we also have the Orleans School Facility Foundation meeting this Thursday, that's prior to the budget hearing at 4:30. Uh, with regards to legislation, uh, our bill made it through, which is great. Uh, so that's wonderful news for us. Also, uh, no agreement's been reached on the, between the House and Senate on the surplus, but they did move out of House Ed SCR2, which is the MFP proposal by Bessie. That does include pay raises for teachers and certificated staff, uh, as well as a permitted teacher stipend. So if that gets approved by the full house, then those will move forward. But they have to close the session, I believe, at dinnertime on Thursday. So they've got some, some work to do between now and then. And then we have, uh, some, uh, conditional approvals of our insurance premiums on the Thursday agenda and it's, it's been a rough go and, and getting these even to the point of a proposal, although we don't have anything on property yet and we've had some, uh, real challenges in that process. And just to go through a little bit, if Tracy's here, Tracy Griffin-Robinson has been very deep in this work, uh, for, over the last six months, um, and can answer some questions on it. But as of right now, we do not have a property quote for next year. So we could be looking at starting July 1 without it. We do hope to find some to bind between then, but there are myriad, uh, issues, uh, facing the district, the city, the state, everyone at this point, and happy to have Tracy answer those for you.
Good afternoon, Board President, Board Members and, uh, Dr. Williams. For those of you that I don't think I've addressed previously, my name is Tracy Griffin-Robinson and I'm Executive Director of Risk Management for our, um, amazing organization. So I believe it comes as no surprise that obtaining any sort of insurance in this region now has become an insurmountable task. So over the last couple of months, uh, as Stuart, uh, Mr. Gay mentioned, we have been going through the normal process of providing our underwriters with information that would be necessary for them to provide us with, um, premium information. Unfortunately, due to all of the instability and shrinkage of capacity in the insurance industry, that has, uh, become a very formidable challenge for the Orleans Parish School Board this year. Um, I would like to say though, uh, I do believe we will obtain a quote and have insurance, but we don't want to, um, give any sort of false ideation that, that, uh, insurance will not come at a premium cost. As we see in the residential space, uh, commercial insurance is, everything is extremely expensive now, uh, due to all of the things that are happening, not just locally, regionally, but in the global market overall. All of the things that we see, um, playing out, um, impacts all of these, um, in, things that we need to do the business that we are tasked with doing here. So again, um, we are working diligently with our broker to, uh, secure coverages that will provide us the type of insulation that we need should we have an event, but, uh, it has definitely been, um, in the entire time that I've been doing this work for the district, I've never had a year like this, this year. So, but, um, we're giving it the best that we have to bring you something. Um, and again, just know that as the current coverage ends on June 30th, uh, we are definitely looking forward to have something in place. Um, and we are, we will be back with very detailed, specific information. And it, it really is relatively specific to the property. We've obtained quotes on all of the liability lines of coverage. So you will have numbers on Thursday that will indicate to you what those premiums are coming and looking like and it will not, um, exceed those numbers. But we will continue the conversation so that if the opportunity presents itself between Thursday and the 30th, when that current policy expires for us to even get those numbers down lower, we will not stop those conversations until we have actually reached the policy end date, which would be June 30th. Um, so pretty much, uh, if you guys have any specific questions at this time, uh, I'll attempt to answer those questions.
Ms. Bowden?
Thank you. Um, it's all feeling very real on my own personal property insurance issue, so, um, it's making me sweat. But, um, so, so, uh, the coverage ends at the end of this month and we may not know the premiums for the new, um, coverage, but we will be covered.
Correct, so what we're asking.
There won't be a gap, a lapse in coverage.
Correct, absolutely.
And then when you present the potential, or the sort of estimated new rates and on Thursday, will you include the current as well so we can see the difference?
Yes, um, there's always, always an illustration that we provide for you guys to see what the expiring rates are compared to what the renewal rates will look like. And pretty much, again, on the liability side, everything is pretty much coming in, what we would term as a flat renewal, where you don't really see a, um, increase that's beyond what's just a standard, um, increase, just cost of doing business that any carrier will impose upon a renewal, um, of that particular insure, insurance product line. So liability, liability coverage is looking as we anticipated. But again, in the region where we are, property is a challenge, um, just across all spaces right now. So we're not immune, we're not insulated from that. But we, again, are, are doing our very best to, to get something that will be, um, obtainable and sustainable for the school system.
And is there, um, what is the typical, what's the typical, uh, when, like, so if you were a school trying to build a budget on this information, right? When would you normally get, when, under normals, well, I don't know, when the last time was normal, but say last year or the year before?
Uh, I was getting ready to say, I don't know that we function in normal anymore.
Right.
You know, when we talk about insurance. If you would have asked me that question probably seven years ago, uh, I would have been a little bit more confident to say, oh yeah, probably like, uh, April, no later than May, we would be able to produce those numbers because we are aware that individual, all of our CMOs need to have that so they can do some, uh, budget projections. Unfortunately, this year has just, it, it has been a historical year for the insurance industry in that regard.
Are we, are we considering like rates doubling like mine did?
No indication at this point.
No, okay.
No, everybody is like extremely tight-lipped, those numbers are close to the vest right now, um, and they're just not letting anything out.
Okay.
I have no indication and I, you know, I would not want to give any sort of, you know, expectation. And then we, you know, we're really, really above what that number is actually coming in, looking like.
Okay, thank you.
President Parker?
First off, thank you, Ms. Griffin-Robinson, for your presentation today and for all the work that you do. I, um, it's incredibly complex and incredibly valuable, uh, for our district, so I just want to thank you publicly. I just want to kind of say for the board, we might want to consider, you know, I know that the state legislature has been focusing a lot on homeowners, uh, homeowners insurance. Uh, we might want to consider moving forward with some solutions with our state delegation on insurance for institutions like, like ours because, uh, the increase that we're seeing is unsustainable for our district. And when we, when we look at the budget, uh, this coming week at our hearing, uh, things like insurance costs haven't, have the ability to blow a gigantic hole in our budget and the types of services that we provide for our students. So just want to thank you for your continued work and, and board members. I think we have some, some work and some collaboration to do.
I would, I would, uh, like to interject that I think this is a conversation. This is a conversation that needs to be had with, uh, not only our state, uh, officials, but also the federal officials. This might be something that has to have national, uh, implications to, to, uh, whole harmless communities across the country, uh, for tornadoes and storms and all kinds of catastrophic events. It, it may be something that, uh, we need to talk to, really look at at a national level.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, some sort of, you know, more national intervention is going to be needed if there is any hope, you know, of, um, continuing to allow people to be able to even think about purchasing insurance, uh, just like you have the National Flood Insurance Program, which, again, we've seen some catastrophic sort of, you know, changes with, uh, risk rating 2.0, uh, as it pertains to the flood insurance. But it is not, it's a little bit more uniform with flood than what we're looking at with the property insurance right now. So, uh, clearly this issue, um, it's, it's a, a national issue and we definitely need input, you know, from our larger, um, stakeholders to help us, um, continue to live in this area with some degree of comfort, knowing that, you know, shouldn't even happen, that we have recourse via insurance to help us rebuild and put our lives back together. And as of today, all of that is, uh, very tenuous. You know, we, we, there's no degree of certainty. You know, we, there's no degree of certainty there. From the residential that bleeds over into the commercial placements, people who have retired, who are on fixed incomes, you know, when they look at their homeowner's renewals now, you're, you're talking about any, it's not uncommon to hear people talk about a 100% increase. And again, their pensions didn't increase. Social Security is not increasing proportionally.
I think it's certain something that we need to bring our, our senators and, and representatives in, into this conversation.
Based on what I've observed and kind of what I've lived through the last six months, any and all help is welcomed at this point.
Thank you.
Colleagues, any other comments at this point? Hearing none, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Gay, does that conclude your presentation? All right. Are there any questions to Mr. Gay about the overall finance? President Parker?
This is not so much a question for Mr. Gay, but I'd just like to point out, we, I just want to reiterate that we have a budget hearing on Thursday. You often hear that budgets are moral documents, so I would just encourage everybody to look at the materials that are online, join us for that budget hearing, which is typically not very well attended. And there are often questions about how we spend our 2% administrative fee. That information can be found in that document, and we encourage anybody to, again, as I said, look through that document, come to the hearing, and ask any questions.
Thank you. All right. We're now moving to our 13 action items. Want to make sure I, I level set here. Let's start with 5.2. Action item 5.2, Fourth Amendment to Contract with Postal Net of Wait in Netherville, excuse me, for professional auditing services. It's recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board rescinds its action of May 19th, 2022, on action item number 4.4 related to Postal Wait in Netherville, and approves a Fourth Amendment to the contract with Postal Wait in Netherville for professional auditing services, renewing the contract for one additional audit for the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2023 for a total cost of $179,000, and authorizes the General Counsel to prepare the contract amendment for signature of the Board President and contractor. May I have a, a motion to move action item 5.2 to the full board?
Some move.
I have a motion by President Parker, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Bowen. Is there any-
There are no public comment cards on Section 5 of the agenda.
Thank you so much. Hearing that there are no comment cards, are there any comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Hearing none, that motion carries on to the full board for consideration at Thursday's board meeting. We're now at action item 5.3, Request to Approve Louisiana State Contract Purchase Food Products and Distribution Services from U.S. Foods, Inc. It's recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board approves the contract with U.S. Foods, Inc. for food products and distribution services in the amount of $400,000, including but not limited to a 15% variance for unforeseen market price increases, and authorizes OPSB General Counsel Repair Contract for Signature of the Board President and of U.S. Food, Inc. May I have a motion to move action item 5.3 to the full board for consideration?
Some move.
I have a motion by Mr. Marshall, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by President Parker. Any comments from my board colleagues on this issue? Hearing none, all, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Hearing none, that motion passes, and action item 5.3 is carried on to the full board for Thursday's business meeting for consideration. Moving on to action item 5.4, Request to Approve Louisiana State Contract Purchase Salesforce System, bless you, enhancements for, for Carisoft. It's recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board approves the purchase of Salesforce System enhancements from Carisoft, a Louisiana state contractor, for a total amount of $80,086.50. May I have a motion to move action item 5.4 to the full board?
Second.
I have a motion, Ms. Bowen, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Seams. Is there any board comment at this point? I hear President Parker.
Yeah, just a quick question, either from Mr. Gay or I suppose maybe Ms. Garden. Can you just talk a little bit about this item and exactly what, I, I see in the notes that it's, you know, replacing paper forms and procedure with digital infrastructure and automation. Can you talk a little bit more about what that looks like?
Good afternoon, Board members. Yeah, I'd be happy to talk about that. So our sales force, our enrollment system is built on a platform that is roughly 10 years old, and we're going through a series of improvements that will foot, put us in a brand-new, state-of-the-art, new system that will give us a lot of expanded capabilities, both for the current responsibilities that sit in the enrollment office, and also a set of things that is like, a list that is long and growing of other opportunities for improvements across the organization. So among them, for example, is the ability for schools would be able to tack on and use, use the enhancements to do registration should they choose to with their school site. For us at the district level, we can use it for a range of things, and we're, we're pleased about the path forward, so.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Excuse me.
Thank, Mr. Marshall?
When you say a range of things, what kinds of things?
We can, for example, some of the things that we list, like, there are just further opportunities for merging systems and bodies of work that happen across the organization. So if we get parent communications, there are ways that we can configure our new system to track those communications in one place where we would have them over time, other enhancements like that, forms that other teams may be using can be automated and linked back to this system as well.
So it, it'll be a way of, of putting everything into one system as opposed to having various ways of doing things?
Over time, yes, definitely. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Garden. I have, we have a motion and a second on this issue. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? No abstentions at this point, that action item 5.4 moves on to the full board for consideration at Thursday's business meeting. We're now going, moving on to action item 5.5, Request to Approve Louisiana State Contract Purchase Student Success Hub from Carisoft. It's recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board approves the purchase of Student Success Hub from Carisoft, a Louisiana state contractor, for a total amount of $277,614.13. May I have a motion to move action item 5.5 to the full board for consideration?
Some move.
I have a motion by President Parker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bowen. Is there any board comment on this particular item? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, action item 5.5 passes and moves on to the full board for consideration at Thursday's business meeting. We're now moving on to action item 5.6, First Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2023 Contract for Milk for the Child Nutrition Program. It's recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board approves an amendment to the FY 2024 Contract with Eastside Jersey Dairy Prairie Farms for milk for the child nutrition program, increase, increasing the contract amount by $33,874 from a total value of $199,125.20 to $233,000, yeah, $233,000. May I have a motion to move action item 5.6 to the full board?
Some move.
I have a motion by President Parker, a second by Ms. Bowen. Is there any board comment on this particular item? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions at this point? Hearing none, action item 5.6 passes, moves on to the full board for consideration at Thursday's business meeting. We're now moving on to action item 5.7, Request to Award Invitation to Bid Number 24-CN-0001, Milk for the Child Nutrition Program Fiscal Year 2024. It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board accepts the only bid received meeting the specifications for invitation to bid number 24-CN-0001 for milk for the child nutrition program for fiscal year 2024 from the Eastside Jersey Dairy Prairie Farms in the amount of $269,433.85. May I have a motion to move action item 5.7 to the full board for consideration at Thursday's business meeting? I have a motion by Ms. Bowen, and a second-
Second.
-by President Parker. Is there any board comments related to this action item? Yes, I have a comment by Ms. Bowen.
So obviously, the price of milk has gone up a lot this year. And this is for this, the program, or the schools that participate in our child nutrition program, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So does this increase in cost get passed to the schools? Is it built into the budget? Is it something we eat?
It's built into the budget, and we could see a change in the reimbursement rates depending. We have to look at those as well for next year, but overall, it would be part of our reimbursement process through the five different USDA programs.
Okay, thank you.
I did see the pun in that, something that we eat as opposed to drink. I got that, that was good. We have a, that was good, a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions at this point? Hearing none, action item 5.7 is approved and moves on to Thursday's business meeting for, for the consideration. Now let's move to action item 5.8, Request to Award RFQ Number 23-0061 Architectural Services for Ninth Ward Stadium. I'm reading this real slow, just in case y'all, this is a big deal. It's recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board awards RFQ Number 23-0061 for architectural services for the Ninth Ward Stadium to John C. Williams Architects LLC, DBA, Williams Architects and Multi Studio. May I have a motion to move action item 5.8 to the full board for consideration? I have a motion by Ms. Bowen, a second by President Parker. Is there any public, is there any board comments, excuse me, on this particular issue? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, this motion passes, bless you, and we'll move on to the board at Thursday's business meeting for full consideration. Let's move to action item 5.9, Request to Approve Contract with Laichen, excuse me, Architects for Design Services for Project Number 23-FAC-0015, Metal Roof Replacement and Mechanical Improvements at the Catherine Johnson School. It's recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board approves the contract with Laichen Architects to approve design services for the metal roof replacement and mechanical improvements, excuse me, at the Catherine Johnson School in the amount of $308,121. May I have a motion to move action item 5.9 to the full board for consideration?
Some move.
I have a motion by President Parker, is there a second? I have a second by Ms. Bowen. Is there any, is there any board comment on this particular issue? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, this motion is carried and moved on to the full board for consideration at Thursday's business meeting. Action item 5.10, Request to Approve Contract with CDW Services LLC for Elementary School Adjustments at Julius Rosenwald, Rosenwald, excuse me, School. It's recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board approves the proposal meeting the specification terms and conditions for elementary school adjustments at Julius Rosenwald School from CDW Services LLC in the amount of $143,000, and authorizes General Counsel to prepare a contract for signatures of the Board President and the contractor. May I have a motion to move action item 5.10 to the full board for consideration?
Some move.
I have a motion by Dr. Batiste, come on. Is there a second? I have a second by Ms. Bowen. Is there any board comment on this particular issue? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, any opposition? Any abstention? Hearing none, that motion carries on to the full board for consideration at Thursday's business meeting. We're now at action item 5.11, Request to Award Request for Proposal Number 23-0071 for Program Grants Management Services Hurricane Katrina. It's recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board accepts the proposal for Program Grants Management Services Hurricane Katrina from CSRS, Inc. in the amount of $128,118.54 for a one-year period with an option to renew for two additional one-year periods, and authorizes General Counsel to prepare a contract for signatures of the Board President and the contractor. May I have a motion to move action item 5.11 to the full board for consideration? I have a motion by Ms. Bowen, is there a second? I have a second by Ms. Seams. Is there any board comment on this particular issue? President Parker?
Yeah, just a similar request to my, similar question from my last one. Can, can we just have some district staff explain a little bit more about the services that are being provided by this contract?
Sure. So this is the closeout of FEMA claims related to Hurricane Katrina. Obviously, this goes back quite a way, so we don't have a whole lot left. We thought we were going to wrap it up before the previous contract expired, but it didn't, so we went back out for another RFP, and CSRS is going to continue this work. And this is just related to Katrina and the CDBG closeout, Alice Hart. But really, the remaining project worksheets are already in place. It's just the final closeout of the reimbursements that we're waiting on. So we do a bunch of work, CSRS does a bunch of work, and then we wait, and then FEMA responds, and then we reply in kind and, and hope to get the money back. So this is to close out the last of the $1.7 billion overall for FEMA.
So in short, we are spending $128,000 in order to, to get these reimburse, reimbursements processed and returned to the district?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments from my colleagues? Thank you, Mr. Gay. There's a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that motion carries on to the full board, and that item will go on, excuse me, to the full board for consideration at Thursday's business meeting. Action item 5.12, COVID-19 Retention Stipends. It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board approves the COVID-19 retention stipends in the amount of 5% of salary up to a maximum of $5,000 for employees hired prior to December 31st, 2022, and 2.5% of salary up to a maximum of $2,500 for employees hired on or after January 1st, 2023. May I have a motion to move item 5.12 to the full board for consideration? I have a motion by Ms. Bowen, a second by President Parker. Is there any board comment on this particular issue? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? If not, that motion carries, and the item will go on to the full board for consideration at Thursday's business meeting. Action item 5.13, Revisions to the Central Office Salary Schedule. It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board approves the proposed revisions to the 7/1/21 Central Office Salary Schedule that would move the ceiling for the maximum salary range and bridge the gap between the grandfathered and July 1/2021 salary tables. May I have a motion to move action item 5.13 to the full board for consideration?
Some move.
I have a present, I have a motion by President Parker, and a second by Ms. Bowen. Is there any comment by my colleagues? Yes, Ms. Bowen.
I'm glad to see this. I think we, we need to be competitive to really attract the best talent to, to join our current really great talent, so I'm glad to see this. Do we expect this to help with a lot of, with our vacant, vacancies? Do you have a lot of vacancies that this is going to help with? Or is this just the time to do this?
I would say both, but we currently have, I think, 16 to 17 vacancies overall, so, and some of them have sat for, for quite a long time. They carried over from this current fiscal year into next year. So we're hoping this helps with some of the recruitment and retention.
Great, thank you.
I have comments.
Ms. Marshall?
Yeah, along with this, I'd like to see what this means in total dollars. You know, what salaries we have, would they, how would they be impacted along with the benefits and, and things that we, that go along with these salaries? I'd like to see some numbers and see the total impact of this by category. I know it's deputy superintendent, chiefs, the executive directors, directors, et cetera, but I have no way of knowing how much this is actually costing the district. So I'd like to see those numbers before I can actually vote on whether or not I can approve this. I think it's good, great in theory, you know, and, and if salaries are the reason why we're not hiring people, I'd like to know that, but I don't have enough information to know that that's the reason, whether we just don't have that kind of talent available for us. How are we, are we competitive? Do we have anything that's to show us, any comparisons to other districts in what, what they're paying for these same positions and things?
Yeah, the HR team does a, does a market analysis on, on all of that and considers not only other districts but also other charter school networks throughout the city as well.
Right.
In that consideration, that's a lot of who we compete against.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see that data. I'd like to see some of that information to be able to see what, what the total impact on the district is going to be.
And this raises the ranges on the top end, again, to align more with this previous salary scale that we had. And so the cost won't be a cost until we would hire someone within this and, but it gives us flexibility on the range in order to offer more competitive salary, but it's not, we're going to hire these five positions tomorrow and here's the stated salaries. We don't have those in the queue currently, but we could show what the total amount of the range changes would be.
Okay, does it also impact the salaries we already have?
No.
No?
No, it doesn't change any of that.
No, this is just for new hires.
This is strictly for new hires?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
President Parker?
Mr. Gay, if you're not the right person to answer this question, I totally understand it, I'm happy to get an email about it, but my understanding from working in other bureaucracies, I'm assuming our bureaucracy is similar, is that an employee typically comes in being unable to earn more than, say, the midpoint or more than the third quartile or something like, do we have policies like that in place? And if so, do you know what those are?
And in that range, well, the policy on the hiring, I wouldn't be able to speak to as far as that goes, but being able to offer, you know, there's step scales and then there's ranges, and so we find the range more effective on the recruitment of staff.
Got it. So it, by increasing these ranges, that doesn't necessarily mean that every new director that we hire is going to make the maximum amount, for example?
That's correct. Very few rarely do.
And I'll just add a comment, and I don't know if this helps with your questions, but this is not a raise, it's just adjusting the salary schedule and it's, it's doing so so that as we have new hires, we are more competitive. For current employees, it, for those that are not grandfathered into the previous salary schedule, it gives them the ability to have a greater range to shoot for in terms of what their maximum salary could be. And, and I would say that I certainly understand at the time when we were looking at changing the salary schedule to decrease, but in terms of the competitiveness that we see in hiring, it's necessary for us to make this adjustment as we plan forward, but it's not a raise, so it wouldn't be something that we'd be able to show you in a quantifiable way that it's impacting us by this amount, this amount at this given time.
Well, you know, this, this also ties into information that was requested previously, that we really haven't had a chance to, we're beginning to get the information, but we haven't had a chance to, to really study the information, and that is the, the, the job positions with the descriptions and the functions of what we're doing. We haven't had the opportunity to, to look at all of those. We just really created the Personnel Committee, which has begun to formulate and do the work that a board really needs to do to understand the work that's going on in its own district. So we're getting there, but we, we aren't there, so there, there are going to be a lot of questions going forward that, that we have not had the opportunity to evaluate and understand.
And check your board updates, because I do know that that information was in your board updates.
And I looked at my board updates and I could not get it because I didn't have a code to get into the update to see it. So that was something else that I was going to talk to you, because it was in his name, Dr. Batiste's name, since he's the chair of that committee, so I did not have access to it. Thank you.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there, there's a motion and a second on the table, I'm going to call for the question. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, action item 5.13 moves on to the full board for consideration at Thursday's business meeting. We're now at action item 5.14, Request to Award Request for Proposal Number 23-0062 for Application Sales Force Integration Engineering. It's recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board accepts the proposal for application sales force integration engineering services from Coastal Cloud LLC in the amount of $200,000 for one-year period with an option to renew for two additional one-year periods and authorize general counsel to prepare a contract for signature of the board counsel and the contractor. May I have a motion to move action item 5.4, excuse me, 5.14 to the full board for consideration?
Some move.
I have a motion by President Parker, a second by Ms. Bowden. Is there any board comment on this particular action item? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? No, nobody's abstaining, thank you. That action item moves, is approved and moves on to the full board for consideration at Thursday's board business meeting. All right, now look at that. We're now at, that concludes the items for the Finance Committee. We are now at the time where a legal legislative committee will be handled by Vice President Evergon, but he's not here, and so instead President Parker has to take the mantle, which I'm, I know he's excited to do that, so I will yield to our president at this time.
I don't know if I'm excited, but I will do my very best, board. All right, so welcome to the Legal and Legislative Committee meeting. We have one item today, action item 6.1, which is the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement with the City of New Orleans Regarding Special Officer Commissions. It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board approves the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement with the City of New Orleans to allow for the New Orleans Police Department to resume issuing special officer weapons commissions to security officers directly employed by the school board. May I have a motion to move item 6.1 to the full board?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Sure.
It's been moved by Board Member Ashley, seconded by Board Member Marshall. Is there any board comment on this issue? Any public comment? Seeing none, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion moves on to the full board for consideration. We are now, you see how quickly that was? You see, you see how quickly that went? Just right through it.
Solid.
We are now moving on to item 7.1. There are no further items on the agenda, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Ashley, seconded by Ms. Bowden and a bunch of others. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The time is now 2:33 PM, this meeting is adjourned.